Okay, everybody, get a seat. We're gonna get started here tonight. Title meeting of the Harpsell Trout County Commission Order. Uh, Sheriff?
All right. The Harpsell County Court of Appeals has now sessioned. Attorney General Dwight Jewell will be presiding. This is Fort Mays session. Attorney General Dwight Jewell, your turn.
Hey, Ms. Whitaker, would you do our invocation tonight, please?
May we bow heads, please. God of heaven, heaven and father, we thank you again for your grace for allowing us to be here this evening. Heaven and father, we ask that you will grant us wisdom to make good, sound, reasonable decisions for the citizens of this great county. We ask you to bless this nation, my father. Heaven and father, after we've done everything that's been assigned for us to do here tonight, we pray that you'll give us traveling grace back to our different destination. In the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord, we ask it. Amen.
Amen. Would Mr. Buckman say, "By edge"?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, Kyle Ross.
Mary Ann Edwards, here.
Mary Ann Baker, here.
Ken Buckman, here.
Shane Burton, here.
Jerry Clary, here.
Floyd Deacon, here.
Bill Ferguson, here.
Jerry Ford, here.
Bubba Gregory, here.
Landon Bell, here.
Richard Hirsch, here.
Dwight Jewell, here.
Linda Johnson, here.
Richard Johnson, here.
Frank Johnson, here.
David Nauner, here.
Amber Russell, here.
Jerry Walsh.
Steve Wood, here.
And can the president want us?
Mr. Walsh had emailed me that he would be possibly running a little bit late, so I feel like he would join us here shortly. Next item on our agenda is approval of amendments from August 24th meeting. They've been distributed to you. Are there any corrections, additions, or additions to the amendments? Any corrections to the amendments? Have a motion to approve, a motion to second, by Mr. Hirsch. All in favor of approving the amendments, please say aye. Any opposed? It is done. Got a few, just a few announcements for you. State law says that the chief administrative officer of the highway department has to designate an interim successor. In other words, someone to step in and take his place if he is incapacitated for a short period of time or something of that nature. I have received from Mr. Scruggs that he is designating Gregory Tomlinson to be his interim successor for the office of highway department. And this is just to fulfill all duties of that office if the county highway department is vacated until we can appoint a successor. Okay? Kind of like, like with us, if something happens to me, Mr. Burks will step in. So we don't have to approve it, we don't have to vote on it, he just has to let us know that that's who he has done, we have this, and Ms. Rita will put it in her minutes and her files. Okay? Also, we, the mayor's work at trying to come up with guidelines for Halloween that is suitable with the health department, and we think we've got that done, do not have any intention to at this time cancel Halloween. These are not rules for Halloween, these are strict guidelines in case people know, want to know what are we supposed to do, how are we supposed to do it? That's what this is for, and we'll be sending those out to everybody as soon as we kind of get finalized on the word. Also, your time sheets, if you did not turn them in tonight, please, if you have them with you, please turn them into Rita or the mayor. And the next payday for your stipend will be October 11th. If you want to go ahead and make a notice when you're able to get that check, it will be on October 11th. We did have a little typo in the committee list, had a few names wrong. You should have received a corrected copy of that. If you didn't, we'll be sure to give one of those to you. I think there was only two because there was a problem with it. Any other announcements? Any commissioners, do you have any announcements? Yes, sir.
Did you get the right date for the stipend, Mr. Jewell?
Did I?
I believe it's the night, not the 11th. The 11th is Sunday.
That's, that's the date I was given, but it would be that Friday, so I think.
The night.
Okay.
It's the night.
Okay, I told him not to thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay? October 9th. I thought that seemed like a pretty far peak down the line there. Okay. Any other announcements? Any announcements? That's okay. Moving on to the agenda, have several, a few things to add to the agenda. We have one notary to add, that is Linda L. Black, a 46. We would add that to the other notary. We had two budget amendments that came forward from the school system that we were able to get into budget finance, but weren't shown on this. Like to add them to the agenda because they need to try to get, get these done this month as possible. That is 2021-14101. It has to do with unemployment insurance. It is a total of $1,109. Also, 2021-14102, and that is on the Jim Siderfield Middle School Route Project. If you would add those when we get the budget amendments, we'll take those up as well. That's the only agenda changes I had. Mayor, did you have anything?
No, sir.
Commissioners, do you have anything? Okay. Have a motion, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Ms. Johnson, Mr. Gregory, second. All in favor of the agenda, please say aye. Any opposed? We'll move on. Citizens' response to the agenda items, if any of our citizens that are here are here or would like to speak to any of the items that are on the agenda, we'd ask you to come up and sign in so that we can recognize you and call on you at the proper time. If you have any, any of the agenda items you'd like to speak to. Anyone like to speak? Don't see any, Mr. Mayor, we'll take your report.
As I've said in previous meetings, we have several grants that have opened up from the state. Some of them were supposed to open up earlier this year due to COVID, they got put back later in the year. The first one is a multi-mobile grant. We did submit our notice of intent for the application on that. We were accepted into the application round, and we're working with a rural planning organization to get our paperwork for our application, get a slip for that. That project will be a proposal to do sidewalks from the end of the streetscape project up to the Broadway and the Boulevard intersection. That intersection is scheduled to be improved and go to bid in the fall of 2021 to add turning lanes on all four directions with turning signals, so that should greatly improve that intersection. Note, the second grant is the local parks and recreation fund. This is a grant that cities and counties can access to make improvements on their parks, walking trails, greenways, those kind of things. What we're going to submit is improvements for ADA improvements and to make the playgrounds more inclusive. I did have a site visit with a company that does some consulting and has equipment for those, and we did go over that, and they made several suggestions. Basically, none of our play equipment is ADA compliant, you know, some of the spacing's not right, so there's going to be several issues there, and we did look at some pieces of equipment, and they're getting together numbers to submit for our budget. We got to put up a budget proposal in this application, so we're working with them on that. All the pieces of equipment we're looking to add are going to be inclusive, so it's for children that have either mobility issues or have their own autism spectrum, so that would be more inclusive playground. It's probably going to be, if you're in the trade park, it's probably going to be on the left side that's closest to the entrance, and they thought it'd be the best, most accessible place, and we're probably going to put the items there. As we get more details on that, I'll share it with the commission so you can look at that. Another grant that was going, we were going to apply for in March but got put off due to COVID, is the built environment grant. Last year, we did get this grant, all counties and cities in the state got $20,000. That's what we used to do, the master plan for the park. This year is up to $85,000. That is a competitive grant, so there's no guarantee we're going to get it, but we're going to submit, according to the Parks and Recreation Committee that voted to submit resurfacing the basketball courts and tennis courts, we're going to put that together and submit that for this built environment grant, and that is straight $85,000, it's unmatched to the county. If you go over the $85,000, then you'll have to supplement it, but at this point, that's what we're looking at. As Mr. Jewell mentioned earlier, we did work on the Halloween guidelines. There were some several suggestions made by the health department, I've incorporated those, and we're going to send those out probably tomorrow or the day after. Again, these are just guidelines, it's not rules, nobody's going to be driving around for some of it, it's just guidelines with advice of here's how to conduct Halloween this year given COVID. Communities thanks to given this year due to COVID, obviously it's not going to be carried out as it usually is, there's not going to be a major event, probably what is going to happen is the Chamber of Commerce is going to work with the fire department, they're going to deliver meals to people who can't get out of their homes or are high risk, and to first responders, so it'll be drastically limited this year, but they're still trying to get those people that wear a service, even if the meal taking place is normal, so that they'll be working on that. There are several things that's opened up under the CARES Act, and there's, really there's just so many different grants under the CARES Act, it's unbelievable. Library got a slice of some CARES money, it's just the library, senior citizens got some for senior citizen center. I believe the EMAs got some grants that came available. And we're looking to submit items that we occurred due to COVID earlier this year. We had to do, go to shifts and do some administrative leave, that's what we amended our policies for other this year to allow us the adaptability to kind of adapt to COVID-19 and the social distancing requirements. We've been told we may be able to submit all that for reimbursement, so we're trying to find anything that we spent money on in the past. We have been told, according to what the comptroller's office has told us to do, so we're going to submit that for reimbursement, so we got to get our paperwork together and submit that. We have started submitting a few items. We actually have every other week, we have a meeting with the gentleman, it's our consultant through the state to kind of go over what we're looking at, give us a little bit of feedback, and then work with us if we need to provide anything else. Work on the courthouse right now, everything is pulled up as far as what's being damaged. The dehumidifiers over there are still running to try to take the last moisture out of there. We're currently waiting on quote to go and do repairs on that. I did look at the floor and thought maybe we could go in there and just refinish those floors, that maybe we could just lose the original floors up there. However, the flooring that you see is actually a subfloor, there's no moisture bear or anything below that, so we will have to probably go back to what we had before. So, I would have liked to put, if we had original floors there that had been okay, I would have liked to refinish those and put those back because it would have really added to the historical value of the courthouse, restored it to what it was, but given that it's a subfloor, and if you actually go and walk on some of those, you would have to replace those if you were going too anyway, they're very rough. So unfortunately, we're going to have to go back to kind of what was there before, but we did look at that as a possibility, but it's just, it's not the kind of flooring that you would be able to restore. That's all the items I have for tonight. Mr. Chairman, if there's any, if you have any questions, just Mr. Ford.
On the day of our work session, you've given us a figure of how many people in the county's census been completed?
It has not. The census was scheduled, originally scheduled to begin in October. The administration has moved it up to the end of September. However, I think there was a federal court that issued an injunction telling them to leave it in October, so that's kind of up in the air. Census Bureau is still wanting you to try to hit that September date, but as I said, there's a federal court order out there, so I, I really don't know what's going on with that, but we would encourage anybody if they haven't completed the census already, please go ahead and do that, go to 2020census.gov, you'll be able to do it online, you can do it by phone, you can do it by, uh, online, or you can got mail. If anybody comes up and comes to your house, please try to complete the census, there's federal funding that relates to schools, a lot of other things that's in there. Plus, obviously, redistricting on federal, state, local level, so there's several things that are tied to this census numbers, as well as recruiters for industry or retail businesses. Look at the numbers that you have in your area because they want to kind of see, they do any concentric rings versus from so far out, we're looking to locate, see kind of what the population density is for that area. So it affects numerous things that you wouldn't think it does, but so if you have anybody in your district that asks you about it, please encourage them to complete the census.
11,242, that's the figure that I've written down, is that correct?
That is the census estimate from last year. You won't know if it's correct until the census is done, and if, obviously, if everybody doesn't complete the census, you won't really know. But the census is going to be our official number, but right now, the estimate is 11,243, and that does include the prison population.
Does it, or does it?
It does.
It does.
Yeah, the prison inmate accidents tried to get the federal government to change their, how they classified people that were housed in state prisons, but they didn't do it this time, so wherever they're housed, they count for those census numbers. Yes, ma'am.
The census GNRC recommended that windows be in, looked at with their historical value before they were replaced. What about the flooring? Would that not be a consideration as well?
Well, right now, they tell you if you need to make any emergency repairs and get those done, right now, to get it back to where we meet ADA requirements, because right now, you've got several rough areas and there's a big hole in the floor, so we're going to have to put those back to meet our ADA requirements. We did have a contractor come out there and looked at them, Mr. Sleet looked at them, and they're just not adequate, they're just not appropriate to try to refinish, but they do allow you to make emergency repairs, to put it back in the condition it was, to kind of break any issues. Then we'll look at, you know, the other issues that are under the historical structure report, but we did look at that, it's just not appropriate for them. Mr. Chair?
CARES Act money, is there a time limit set on that, when it has to be spent or anything?
There is a time limit for this. You have to have all your paperwork and everything, or at least your application started for reimbursement by November 1st. For this particular tranche of the CARES Act, I've said, there's several different, I mean, there's numerous grants, projects underneath this, but what we're submitting for through the state to get reimbursed, we have to have our application started by November
Any other questions for the mayor? Thank you, Mayor. Moving to committee reports, we're from the steering committee, met Tuesday, September 1st at 6 o'clock at courthouse. We reviewed the committee assignments, not wanting to ask to change your committee assignments we talked about. You need to meet sometime before the end of the year to elect or re-elect new chairmen or keep the ones you have, but you do need to have a meeting to do that, chairman, vice chairman, and secretary. And please be thoughtful of the needs and responsibilities that are on the office to make sure that whoever you elect knows what their responsibilities are and that they need to do, as far as agendas and minutes and things of that kind. We will have some added to it after the election to the fourth district. I wanted to wait and see who was elected and let them tell me which committee they would like to serve on, is why I didn't put place holder on there, we'll add them in at a later date. We have a report on the, kind of the status of where we were with replacing and repairing the fire hydrants in the county. I think Tommy, give us a just quick numbers, we've identified 20, we've got 15 completely finished?
Well, a little more now, but 15 at that last year.
Okay.
It's probably around 12 to 19.
Okay. So, really been working on that, want to congratulate and thank the water department for making that a priority and taking and doing that. Under new business, the mayor told us about the leak at the courthouse, and hopefully that will be covered under county insurance. We discussed the sprinkler demonstration, which we did have, appreciate the good turnout for that, hope that was very informative to you. We went over the budget amendments, and all of them were sent forward to the budget finance meeting. And we talked about items for commission that we would be electing a chair of pro temp at this meeting. The appointments, we discussed the appointments that we have up for you tonight. We discussed the road names that will be added to the road maintained list that we have on the agenda tonight. The windows in the courthouse, we had a budget finance request to send them back to the building committee because they want to get a, a report, a historic structure report done to give us advice on whether to repair some or all, or replace all. So that was sent back to the building committee to develop that with the mayor for an RFP We were looking at trying to get an engineer to look at the sidewalks. We had asked the mayor to retain an engineer to look at them and let us know what needed to be done with that. And we have the new codes update that we'll be looking at this afternoon. And briefly discuss the jail and the homeless population, some of those things, and possibility when the next county sale would be. I believe we went over that, and that's in the process, trying to get that put together. And I think that was about it on the steering committee. Most everything that needed to be referred was either referred back to the building or was referred to the mayor to take care of in the budget finance meeting. Budget finance did meet on September 21st at 6 o'clock. We reviewed the financial summary and the trustees' reports from August, no anomalies We looked at our estimated fund balances for the end of the year. They're not the audited figures, they are the plugged-in figures, but the audits, sometimes auditors can juggle items from one category to another category where something's miscategorized. But pretty much that's where we wound up, which we wound up here, I believe, $11,000 overall, less than total fund balances than we had the year before, which I think is very good, considering all we dealt with the last half of the year. Budget amendments, all the budget amendments we have tonight were reviewed by the budget finance committee, they were all recommended to the full body, and we can discuss those individually when we, when we get to them. I believe that's all we had, budget finance.
Code and zoning, we've been at next meeting there on the 15th, September 15th, we did meet. This was the second meeting of code and zoning, we've met at office as well, still in discussion of the new building codes, 2018 building codes. That was, we were looking at the ICC codes, in this case, Mr. Edwards came and presented some of his conversations of where he's going, kind of would like us to go as we're looking forward, it's our time to adopt a new set of building codes for the county. Tonight, on the agenda here, we have a, an adoption, hopefully of, of an opportunity, I guess is what I should say, of adoption, to look at the 2018 ICC codes adoption. That is considering what we would consider maybe the commercial side, the building side of that piece, including everything except for single-family duplex and townhomes. That's what we're really looking at tonight. This discussion excludes those pieces, is what it excludes. Mr. Jewell mentioned earlier about the fire sprinkler display, those other three will be handled later. I, we're having a meeting, I think it's scheduled for the 8th, I believe, I had to look back at my, I believe it's 8th of this next month of October. But we have a code and zoning meeting scheduled, and that is where we'll take up another conversation. There's been a lot of discussion on pros and cons on this case, but we'll leave that for the future of that discussion we've discussed. Residential a little bit, but mainly at this point, we are looking at adopting those ICC building codes for everything except for single-family duplex and townhomes at this point.
That, that meeting is Tuesday, 6.
I apologize.
Tuesday, 6.
Tuesday, 6.
Emergency services met September 30th, September 17th.
Well, September 3rd, we had a meeting, we went over the minutes of the January 14th meeting. Mr. Maydick had to give us an update of, of all his equipment, a live demonstration of outside, just new equipment, an auto mower, and a power cock, we lift systems that raises the patient up without the ambulance or other personnel to have to do it. They also showed us a monitor, the striker compression device that does CPR without nobody having to do it, while they can do other things. And he's, they made a statement at the end that probably by next year, he would need a new ambulance, around $180,000. And also, we discussed with Mr. Karros, come and talk to us, give a chance to discuss the concept of assigned center and interview process. Our chief assistant will consist of three parts, a structural interview, tactical situation scenarios, and a role play situation, about three parts. And he said that they would write that up, and on September 17th, we had a call meeting and to see what he had wrote out and everything that's good except for one little part at the end, we questioned something about the scoring, and it was supposed to be, the mayor was supposed to contact him and about change him the wording on that.
That also? Next, law enforcement, law enforcement committee met September 8th. We had a brief report on the new jail committee, working with CCP. They're in the process of meeting and looking at some possible sites, and what size the building needs to be, and some possible rough estimates of the cost of it, but they're just now getting started. That, about to sum that up, Mayor.
I'm sorry, Mr. Trump.
I'm sorry. The new jail committee is just now beginning to get organized.
We had one meeting, and what came to the meeting is they asked that we look at the sites we were evaluating, I did some preliminary work on it, I consulted Mr. Edwards, I looked at to see if there were some issue that it may be in a floodplain or floodway, I did go through the state system. The first site to consider was kind of in between Mr. Abatoy's building here on the north side of Goose Creek and the sheriff's department, so be kind of back in that gravel area and extend out to in between those two buildings for the Sallyport, so they bring inmates in, and then a walkway over from the existing sheriff's department. That would be in a floodway. Right now, FEMA and everybody doesn't want you to build in a floodway. The B site we looked at, some of the open land over where the old tobacco warehouse The B site we looked at, some of the open land over where the old tobacco warehouses used to be that fell down, where the fire station was built. That is in the 100 here at floodplain, so if we do anything, it's going to have to be raised up. But if you fill that in, the T deck's going to want to know where that floodwater goes. And it's probably going to come over here on the football field because that's the next lowest place when it comes down from creek. And was contacted by the USDA, they heard we were looking at doing a jail. They asked me the sites we were looking at. I sent them the map I printed out showing the floodplain and the floodways and asked me if we had any other sites. So, right now we are evaluating those two, see what we've got to do. Mr. Bass with Tennessee Corrections Institute suggests that we hire and somebody come in to an environmental assessment of sites and core samples if it is suitable. So, that'd be the next step. Right now, I'm really trying to work through those areas that we can address without having to retain somebody to do it. So, right now, really the only step I've got left is to contact T-DOT, I mean, excuse me, T-Deck and see, they have some flooding modeling, modeling they can do. Last year I met with the new commissioner, a bunch of mayors in the national area did, he offered their services to try to do some flood mapping if we can give them some information. So, I'm going to follow up with them and see if they can do some initial flood mapping and kind of give us their thoughts on it because where it would be in a floodway, they are going to be involved in looking at that site. So, once we get that done, then we're going to have to look at doing, hiring somebody, consultant come in, engineer or something to look at those sites and give us their feedback. We may end up having to buy a site if we can't find one that the county already owns.
We asked the sheriff about the new truck that was purchased for the workhouse. He says that it was, they did get it purchased and it is in service and working well. Sheriff Russell informed us of the request by Judge Kane to try to do hearings through WebEx or some internet type portal. And he's been working with Ardis Networks to see what it would take to do that, what the cost estimate on that would be. And we discussed that there may be some care of fund monies that could be used for that. Sheriff Russell gave us a report on the, on the jail and the justice center. We're actually housing at that time nine people in the justice center due to overcrowding in jail. And they did do the annual jail inspection report and other than noting that we were overcrowded, several things were grandfathered in because of the age of the jail, but other than that was good report. Is that correct, Sheriff?
That's correct.
Okay. Let's see. And I think we discussed the sprinkler demonstration that we're going to have on September 22nd. I believe that's all I had for law enforcement. Yes, sir.
Do you have the new jail, what the capacity?
That's what we're trying to decide. That's the thing, everybody keeps talking about the capacity. The capacity is going to be based on how far you're trying to make it last. Do you want it to last five years, 10 years, 15 years? That's going to dictate what your capacity is going to be built to. If I speak out of turn, please tell me. So, I mean, that's the things that this committee is looking at. Not only where, but how big and how big is going to be determined a lot by how far you want it to carry into the future, what you're predicting growth on.
Will the old jail still be used?
We'll look at uses for that. Right now, one of the things we're talking about is we've had up to, Sheriff can correct me if I'm wrong, there's probably about four companies that would have relocated to traffic and we had work inmate, inmate work release program. I talked to two personally. And so, that's something we're looking at is try to turn the old jail into the workhouse so we can have a work release program and look at other programs that other counties and cities have put in place to find that they have reduced their recidivism. I think in some of the programs, and again, Sheriff can correct me if I'm wrong on this, I think it's down towards Chattanooga, they had from the people that participate, West Tennessee? Okay. From the people that participated in the program, the recidivism rate went from 80% to 6%. So, they have seen great improvement and cost savings for that program. A lot of counties across the state are looking into that and the Tennessee county services associations, criminal justice committee, which I'm on, is looking into that to try to see if there's programs we can maybe put in place without state help or if there's state laws we need to get changed to try to help with that because inmate population's just going to keep increasing. One of the things that wasn't taken into account a few years ago, try to take into account now is explosion in your female population. When the jail was redone, there was, was it zero beds or four beds was for females?
Never, not any.
No beds for females, but today the females are usually bouncing around about 16 inmates?
Oh, I think I got 10 today.
10? So, if you go from zero to 10, that takes up a good amount of your, your capacity. So, that's where this new jail is going to include right now. Preliminary idea was about 183 spaces with about 44 females.
The last time that jail was done, and I know the sheriff knows this, it was paid for the state prison board. We didn't raise taxes on the bidding.
It cost $400,000, we had it on.
That's right.
Mr. Knowles?
Would juveniles be put in there too?
Juveniles have to be housed at a special juvenile facility. Right now, we contractor, he's one in Murphy'sboro, Woodsboro.
Yeah, that's right. So, we still have to go over that.
Yeah, we, we do not want to get into housing juveniles whatsoever.
Okay, any more questions about law enforcement? Arkin Ramsey?
We had a meeting September 24th. The mayor discussed about the grants, the immediate program, might have motion to pencil in with them, the built environment grant and the T-Deck grant. Had a update from Flip Salina, the public works director. He said they've been working mostly on the ball fields and stuff where the flood come and flow. He said it didn't do as much damage to the little league fences and stuff as it did the last time. They sort of stretched the fences out and all that. Cliff's supposed to be looking at giving some price and some poles that has been replaced at the little league fields. He's supposed to be getting some prices and get back with us on that. And I asked him about the cameras at the park. He said that they are doing good, they're turning crime down there and happy with that. And that's about it. Our next one, I've got another meeting scheduled, October 29th, 6:00.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Are there any other committee reports that I missed? I think that's all the ones I had on the list that met last month. We'll move into our active business. First item of business is election of commission chairman, chairman pro team. We do this every year in September. Board is open for nominations for commission chairman. Mr. Harsh?
Nominate Dwight Jewell to be chairman of the county commission.
Have a nomination of Mr. Jewell.
I second.
Have a second, Mr. Gregory. Are there any other nominations?
Make a motion, nomination ceased, can be elected by a motion.
We have a motion and a second. Motion by Mr. Ford, second by Ms. Johnson to cease the nominations and elect by acclamation. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I'll do the best I can. And then commission chair pro team, board is open for nominations and I got 40 hands. I think I caught Mr. Ferguson. Second, have a second. Any other nominations? Ms. Cole?
Make a motion, nomination ceased, can be elected by a motion.
Motion by Mr. Ford, second by Ms. Johnson, nomination ceased, Ms. Ferguson. Have a motion, the nomination ceased by Mr. Ford and the second by Ms. Johnson and Ms. Ferguson being elected pro team by acclamation. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Thank you, Ms. Ferguson.
You're welcome.
Thank you, number one. Next, we'll move into appointments. We received a, an appointment from Judge Lindble to appoint Lisa Scruggs as our new judicial commissioner. Ms. Scruggs is here, you want to stand up? In case y'all don't know her, I think everybody knows her, should know her. Need a motion to approve her? Ms. Jones, Ms. Gregory. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Go get them tiger. All right. Board of equalization, these are two-year terms. We have two new people and three that are there serving now that we want to reappoint. Up to reappointment is Mark Abatoy, Lloyd Butts and Eric Calder. They have all been serving for several years. New, we have Linda Carey who will be assuming Michael Potts' past seat. Shelby Lee will be assuming Lisa King's vacation seat on the board of equalization. That's the five names that we have for you. We can take them all in one motion or if somebody has an objection to one of them, we can talk, take them out and talk about it. Mr. Knowles?
Make a motion to approve all.
Have a motion to approve those five, second by Ms. Jones. Any further discussion about it? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is done. We will notify Mr. Potts as his equalization board. We have one appointment, the industrial development board. Glenn Haynes, since he retired and has having some health issues, wanted to be relieved from his duties on that board. And the mayor has given us the name of Seth Thurman to assume Mr. Haynes' term that will end January 21st, 22. He is assuming that role and that term will end January 21st, 2022. Mr. Player?
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve, second by? Excellent. Whatever. I'm so used to calling y'all by your first name. Sometimes I get hung up on my last name. That's my fault. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I believe that's all the appointments we have. Is that it, mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Move into resolution. First one's resolution 2020 dash 20 dash 695. This is a resolution reviving and approving a road to the county maintained road list. This is Hickory Ridge lane and Hickory Ridge subdivision. And this is, has met all requirements to be taken over by the county and is being recommended by the county highway department. Ms. Jones? Motion to approve, Mr. Knowles makes a motion to second. Any discussions? Seen none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Does carry. Next is resolution 2020 21 696. This is a resolution revising and approving the Hartford County road list and Acorn Trail, which is also in Hickory Ridge subdivision. It has met all requirements of the county highway department, has been recommended by them to add to the road list of roads that we maintain. Any questions about it? Okay.
Make a motion, Deborah.
A motion to accept and Ms. Jones makes a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that is done. Next is resolution 2020 dash 22 697. This is a resolution naming the commission committees and members for this coming year. Like I say, we were given a new list. I think there was only two names that were inaccurate there. There's no changes to the committee structure at this time. No one requested it be changed to a different committee.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Dickie. Second by Mr. Harsh. Any discussion? Like I said, we will be adding some to it later, but right now this is for a read. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
It does carry. All right. We'll move into ordinances. First, we have ordinance 203, 2020 18. This is an ordinance to amend the zoning map and change partial 020 dot O2 on tax map O18 from C2 to A1. This is in urban services. This is in urban services A1, which urban services does have ACU small areas of A1. This is the one that was before you before where we were trying to get it to C1, which is your downtown district. They're still wanting to build a house there and this request is from the property owner to change from C2 to A1. This came forward from the planning commission with no recommendation to do it or not do it. And this is our first reading. We will have a public hearing on it next month. Ms. Jones can, let her first.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, have a motion to approve. Mr. Ford?
Sir.
Will second, okay. Is there any discussion about this? I understand what we're doing. We're changing this one tract A1. It does the button A1 behind it. Okay? Any questions? Anybody want to speak to it? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Have show hands, all in favor, show your hand. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13. Opposed? At 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. If I oppose, it does carry. Will be up for public hearing and second reading next month. Next is ordinance 204, 2020 dash 19. This is an ordinance to rezone partial 013 point O8, map number 027 from I1 to R1. This is in an effort to get the zoning consistent with the use. There is a large tract of land down on the river on the backside of Parrot Lane, windy acres that is identified in the original zoning maps as industrial. Think it was set aside at some point in time for future possible industrial development. Has never had any industrial development on it, or as I know of in 30 years I've been dealing with this, no one's ever asked for any industrial development on it. A portion of it was cut off in the tracks and there are several houses were built down there. Felt like it was resoned at that time, but we were unable to find where that had been done. So, this is at the owner's request to try to there again, bring our zoning maps into alignment with what's there. Ms. Player?
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. The court makes a second. Any other discussion or questions? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It does carry. You're likely to see some more in that same area coming forward in the coming months. Ordinance 205, 2020 dash 20. This is an ordinance to adopt certain of ICC building codes, the 2018 edition. Currently, we're on some of the 2009, some of the 2012. This will update us to the 2018. This is required by the state in order for maintain our own building department and be in current with the state law. All the ones that are mentioned there, the building code, fuel, gas, mechanical plumbing, fire code, all of those are what is in place now, just on a different addition. This is updating the addition of the code. The international residential code, the IRC, covers strictly residential. That is not included here because we're going to have the discussion about whether the legal. to leave fire sprinklers in or take fire sprinklers out. We'll get into that at a future time. We felt like we could go ahead and get this one done, and then deal with that one next month. Any questions about this? These were recommended by committee, and we'll have a first reading tonight. We will have a public hearing on them next month, and a second reading if it passes tonight. Mr. Nolling?
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Russell?
Second.
Any more discussion? Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's done. Thank you. I think that's all the ordinances we had tonight. Move into our budget amendments. Several of these are grants that we received. We will, we'll just go ahead and try to pass through them, call some of them one way and somewhere another way. First one is Budget Amendment 2021-10102. This is dealing with the 101 County General Fund. This is a Carers Act grant funding that came in for the library, where they're receiving this eighteen hundred and fifty-eight dollars, and they want to put it in the line items of other supplies and materials and other equipment. This will not require any money coming out of the fund balance. This is where it's coming in, where we have to allocate, where it's going to. Any questions? Ms. Ford?
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve, second by Ms. Johnson. Yeah, I think we can do these by voice, though. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That one does pass. The next one is 2021-10103R. This is a request to amend the 101 County General Budget. This is some fire department funds that came in on a donation last year toward the end of the year, and they were committed to the fire department, and they wanted to use these to buy some air bottles. This is basically carrying that over from last year to this year, and a little bit additionally. You're putting that amount into the fire department budget, and they're going to buy some new air bottles with it. Mr. Nolling?
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Ms. Jones makes a second. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? See, that one's done. Next one is 2021-10104. There again, this is amending the County General Budget out of the fire department line items for DM and fees. This is what you're debiting, you're crediting salaries, wages, Social Security, Medicare, our personnel policy. Basically states if we have an employee that is a volunteer firefighter, that they are paying their wages out of the fire department instead of the agency they work for. We did not put any money in the budget for that because we did not have anybody in budget time in that situation. We have hired somebody, they are in that situation now, so this is so we can pay them out of the credit department. It's not any new money, it's just allocating it for that line item. Ms. Jones?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Mr. Gully makes a motion to second. Any questions?
Where's our booty going to move?
It's coming out of their budget. It's coming out of our department per DM and fees. It's already in the budget. Any other questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It does carry. Next is 2021-10105. This is to amend the 101 Fund, the County General Fund, some Carers Act grant funding that came in specifically for the senior center, twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. They want to allocate it to their line item, a senior center, other supplies and materials. They have some plans what they want to use it for, for materials, trying to make programs better for people during the COVID, and they were approved for that grant. Did I explain that good, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions about it? Mr. Gully makes a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Ms. Player to get the second. Any other questions or discussion about this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion does carry. Okay. All right. The next one we have for you tonight is 2021-101, 06-FB. This is a request to amend the 101 General Fund. This will be a fund balanced draw of eighteen thousand, one hundred ninety-four. The purpose of this is for administrative assistance that is requested in the Building Inspection Codes Office. This position will help with paperwork, scheduling, basic clerical work. It is expected this position would be hired at roughly thirteen dollars an hour and work twenty-four, twenty-five hours a week. Currently, that's what that would fund. That is consistent with what the other administrative assistants in the courthouse make. This one, we will have to have a roll call. Okay. Any questions? Any question? Any discussion? Any motions? Ms. Jones?
Make a motion to approve.
Second by Ms. Russell. Have a motion by Ms. Jones, second by Ms. Russell. All in favor? Read it.
Mary Ann Baker? Yes. Ken Bugmacher?
Yes.
Shane Burton?
Yes.
Gary Clarity?
Yes.
Coy Deke?
Yes.
Phil Ferguson?
Yes.
Jerry Ford?
Yes.
Paul Gregory?
Yes.
Laney Valley?
Yes.
Richard Harsch?
Yes.
White Jewel?
Yes.
Linda Johnson?
Yes.
Richard Johnson?
Yes.
Frank and Jones?
Yes.
David Naulder?
Yes.
Amber Russell?
Yes.
Gary Walsh?
Yes.
Steve Whitaker?
Yes.
Eight, T, S, one, no.
It is done. We have two that have come forward from the school system. First one is twenty, let me make sure I get them right here. Yeah, 2021-14101. This is to amend Fund 141 of the General Purpose School Fund. There is some unemployment payment refunds that came back to the school system for the months of April, May, and June. This is to put that money into miscellaneous refunds, and they're going to put it back in their unemployment compensation line item category. This is money in, money out, doesn't affect any new money. Mr. Bugmacher?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve, and a second by Ms. Johnson. Any question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is done. The next one is 2021-14102. This is a motion to amend the 141 General Purpose School Fund. This is on the bond issued on the Jim Satterfield Middle School Roof Project for one million, forty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars. This would be the bond issue, the money coming in, putting it into capital outlays for building improvements. Any discussion, any question? Mr. Hart?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Mr. Hart, the second by Ms. Baker. Any discussion? Any question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It does carry. We have several budget amendments we're going to have next month from the school system. These were the two that they really need to get in on this month's business. I'm glad we can get that done for you after that. Let's see. Next, we have another. At two, that's the mile we're trying to weld it at, the Duster Park, Ninja Black, the four ship. Ms. Player?
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve both. Second by Ms. Jones. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any other business from any of the commissions? Okay. Public, public comment? Anything anybody wants to public or make a comment? Seeing none? I'm sorry. I'll entertain Mr. Walsh's motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, second by Ms. Johnson. All in favor, please get up and leave.